The first thing on our agenda is the consideration of agenda amendments. And do I have any? I have one. I just saw it this morning, but if you will look at number seven, counsel is misspelled. It should be C-O-U-N-S-E-L, not C-I-L. But I didn't see that until this morning, so I've been reading through this for a while.
I have a change I'd like to make. I'd like to pull up the reserve fund schedule out of consent agenda to be discussed separately. We could after the consent agenda.
We can do that, okay. And we'll put it on the agenda right after the consent agenda then. Okay. All right.
You put it on where, right after?
Right after the consent agenda, since we're going to be looking at the financial stuff there anyway. Any other changes to the agenda? All right. Do I have a motion to accept the, or accept the changes to the agenda?
Salute.
All right. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, instead, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, so the agenda has been amended. The next thing on our agenda is our citizens' time. And before we start the citizens' time, what I thought I'd do is go ahead and read what we actually have in our bylaws that refer to the consent agenda. And I am in the wrong section. Just to kind of give guidelines for the citizens' time. What it says in our bylaws are, "Citizens' time is an opportunity for citizens to present comments and information to the board regarding any matter within the scope of the board's authority. Any person who desires to speak will be asked to provide their name and county of residence. Citizens are expected to address the board as a whole and not as single individuals. During citizens' time, each speaker will be permitted to speak for up to three minutes." And so with that, I think we can begin with our citizens' time, and I will just take them as they're sitting here. First person is Pat Jordan, and Pat is from Hanover.
Why, it's nice that you know that. Yes, I am. I am from Hanover County, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of our librarians, because I think they do such a marvelous job that the attacks that I feel are being placed on them is just absurd. We come and we make opinions, yet we don't have the work to do that they have to do. We don't have the degrees that they have to make the decisions on whether what they've decided is appropriate and is accurate. And so I think we should take all of that into consideration. I'm always appalled when any one group of people want to tell an entire other group of people what they can and what they cannot do as a democracy. That's left up to us to decide as a whole, and I don't see where the few people here in this room should dictate what my children, what my grandchildren should read. And that is what I feel like you are attempting to do, to move what you feel is not appropriate. I've heard a couple of you speak toward, "Well, my child brought home 10 books. I can't review all of them." Don't let your child bring home 10 books. Let him bring home what you can review, because I've never had that issue. And I'm wondering why these issues are coming up all of a sudden. I'm sure in your time in school, in my time in school, I've never heard about any of this. The library was a place where my mom would take us, and we'd go and be there, and that's a safe zone. And I think it's still that safe zone, because many of the books that are being pulled are books I read when I was in school. And so I believe that this is an issue that is really being drawn really out of nothing. It's something that you are addressing that has no need to be addressed. And the fact is, there are other plentiful things going on that you could be helping our librarians with, making sure they have all the things that they need. We have friends groups, you know, to have to supply that, making sure we have programs in our libraries for our teens. We do a great job with young kids, but once they hit that 12-year mark, it drops off, and there's nothing for them to do. So why don't you pay attention to things like that instead of telling me what my child, my grandchild, should and should not be able to read? I would appreciate that a lot more, thinking of the work that you were supposed to be doing. I think that sometimes we just go off track. Somebody comes up with, "Oh, I found this book in the wrong place in the library, and it had sex in it." It may even have the word sex in it, but all of a sudden, it's blown out of proportion. And that is how I see this issue. And I am hoping that you will turn around and think and remember that you are not the appointed guardians of everybody. You direct your children, your grandchildren, but you should not have the authority to direct all of ours. And I'd like you to consider our librarians, consider the things that you keep piling on them, asking them to do. I think it's too much. I thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next person on the list is Peggy. I'll get you in a minute. Okay. We will wait for Peggy. We will do Paul Jamerson, and Paul is from King William.
I wish to talk about questionable books in our library, and I will refer the trustees and the people here to the Board of Trustees meeting in February 28, '24. We had two speakers, Dorothy Wassenberg and Sharon Langwin. And if you go to the audio version of that meeting, at the six-minute mark, you will hear Dorothy talk about excerpts or repeat excerpts from Jack of Hearts and Other Parts by Rosens L.C. and Sharon Langwin, at the 12-minute mark, talked about And They Live and gave excerpts from that book. Now, I think both of those books are good examples of the definition of Article V in the Code of Virginia about obscenity. Now, what I would suggest to anybody in this room, if you do not think so, go listen to the audio, then go to the hour forty-minute mark, where you can hear the PRL management and trustees debate whether it's considered porn or offensive or not. Now, I would also suggest that you take, use your library card, check out one of the books, read through it, and then find yourself an eight-to-11-year-old child along with a law enforcement person, and you sit down and you start reading from either of the books. Now, would anybody be surprised if you were considered contributing to the leniency of a minor or accused of being maybe a pedophile because of the content of some of the books? Now, it's up to you to look at it and make your own decision, but I suggest that the voices of reason are the ones that says we should move these books over to the adult section of the library, where a parent with a kid, with the kid with a parent's permission can come in and check it out, or the parent can check it out for them if they feel so strongly that the kid should read those stuff. The next part I wanted to talk about was the funding. I don't know if the PRL has to cut any of its bureaucracy or not. I'm not sure how they're planning on doing the hours for King William. I understand we're going to be reduced by 12. Does it mean we take the people who run the library, the librarians, and kind of stagger their shift? If they do, then we have something called Friends of the Library, who can step in as volunteers to help persons that are here by themselves to actually do the work that they need. And this cannot just for here. It could be Hanover, Ashland, whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next person is Sharon Landrum. Sharon is from King William.
Thank you. This past Monday night, King William held their Board of Supervisors meeting and approved the 2025 budget without the $45,000 increase that PRL requested for 2025. Mr. Shepley informed the board that if they do not fund this increase in addition to the already budgeted roughly $603,000, the two King William branches would have a decrease of 12 hours per week for each branch. For those unfamiliar with the King William budget, the 2025 budget is very austere and does not allow for any salary increases in King William, none. This is unlike PRL, Hanover, and the surrounding counties. Our board could not justify the $45,000K in light of these facts. My question to the board and the director, how is calculation of 12 hours per branch made, and how will it be implemented? My assumption is that it was related to personnel, but I would like the figures and the plan for the implementation. From our rough calculations, this works out to be 1248 hours per year for both branches at roughly $18 an hour for the required two staff members. I would like clarity on this matter and an idea of what this will look like, but I have another consideration. I would also like to know if there is another avenue to work around this decrease in hours. I understand that the West Point renovation was a contribution from both King William and PRL. Because King William came in under the budgeted amount for the West Point renovation, did PRL also come in under the amount that was allotted? If so, is it possible any unused funds or other monies in the general fund would be used to offset the $45,000K? I'm just asking. On another note, at the last meeting in April, we heard public comment from Dr. Sheila Fury, child adolescent and adult psychiatrist, about the harms of sexually explicit material to minors. Unfortunately, as of yesterday, this recording of April 24th and the last recording of the follow-up meeting on May 13th are not posted online. Were these recordings made? If so, why are they not posted? Please look into this, as Dr. Fury took time out of her insanely busy schedule to give an informative three-minute summary, and she is an expert in the field. I highly recommend that PRL consider her comments. They are backed up with many studies on the harmful effects of sexually explicit materials to minors that have repercussions into their adult life and society in general. Thank you so much.
Okay. Our next speaker is George Crafts from Goochlin.
I want to take you back to the late 1950s. 10th grade, Woodrow Wilson High School, Dallas, Texas. I was in the 10th grade at that high school then. You sign text for all the English classes for that grade at the time was Julius Caesar by William Shakespeare. My memory is that there was no complaints about this choice. Students, parents, anything. Granted, I was only a child then, but I remember no complaints. I look back at that text, and I quickly realized it could be taken to advocate political assassination as legitimate. In other words, the head of your government is a tyrant, and one of your options is to kill him. I look and I think back to what I remember of the scenes in there. Brutus and Cassius, who were among the conspirators, are often portrayed sympathetically. Granted, there are arguments on the other side, but to me, the argument for political assassination there is clear, and no one complained at the time. No one. Why? This is not hidden if you read the play. I have a possible suggestion. I realize there are more than one possibility, but look at that time, about 1958. We were just coming out of McCarthy era. We had just seen so much rampant accusations of the worst kind, lies, lists of communists or pinkos, all sorts of accusations. Joseph McCarthy was the one all behind it, who started the ball rolling, and it was politically motivated. I think our nation had had enough of that kind of thing by then, and was trying to leave it behind. My point is, I hope we can learn some things from our predecessors.
Thank you. Next is Dee Kaiser, also from Goochlin.
Hi, I am the Board Secretary of the Friends of the Goochlin Library, part of the Pumonkey Regional Library System. I was adopted into a dysfunctional family. There was yelling and screaming, and my younger brother was sometimes beaten by my father. When it got to be too much, I would escape outdoors, often walking the one and a half miles to our local library. There I could read books about horses and about children my age who had worse troubles than mine, children like Anne Frank. Now, this diary of Anne Frank has been questioned by many localities. In 1998, it was removed for two months from the Baker Middle School in Corpus Christi after two parents charged that the book was pornographic. In 2010, in Culpeper County, it was challenged by a parent that said it was complaining about that the book included sexual material and homosexual themes. But this book was one that helped me keep my life in perspective. The library was my safe place, and I loved it dearly. It is no secret that our school and public libraries are currently challenged across our country. The American Library Association has said that between January 2023 and August 2023, book challenges increased 20% over the same period in 2022. And I'm quoting from the ALA, "The vast majority of challenges were to books written by or about a person of color or a member of the LGBTQ+ community." This Board of Trustees has already started to change some library policies. The distant thunder heard at these meetings could become a storm of book labeling, reshelving, or outright banning. I will keep attending these meetings and encourage others to attend. The Board of Trustees needs to know we are watching and will not be silent in the face of any form of limited access to the library's collection. The purpose of a public library is to allow all people free access to the total collection. If a book offends you, don't check it out. If your child checks out a book you don't want them to read, return it. These are individual decisions. No person should decide what another's child may or may not read. Our children are developing in a complicated world. It is essential that they learn critical thinking. Reading about the complexities of history, racial issues, and gender identification may raise uncomfortable questions that we, as parents, may need to discuss with our children. These conversations are part of a healthy education for young people, enabling them to discuss complex subjects with a trusted adult before venturing off on their own. We should not deny access to books based on our individual fears and biases. We must not keep our children from developing the critical thinking skills that will enable them to cope with real life. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And our last speaker that I have cards from is Peggy Lavender. Peggy's from Hanover.
Good morning. Thank you for moving my spot. My name is Peggy Lavender. I am Friends of the Kansasville Library. You all know who I am. I appreciated the documents that were posted for this meeting with the data for circulation and attendance and use of the services. And my question on that would be, the numbers are going up. They're wonderful to see, the thousands of services and visits we're seeing through our regional system. And it indicates a highly functioning, well-curated organization that doesn't require micromanaging or massive changes in policy for collection, personnel, resources. So the dichotomy there is you have a highly functioning, popular, well-attended, well-patronized system, and you have a board that is micromanaging and making decisions about massive policy changes. Those two things shouldn't be going together. So what I suggest is that anybody who has a problem with the library, address it individually with the branch, with the professionals. If they don't see what they want in the system, they should ask for it. All this energy, all this chaos could be avoided if people were just, and it comes from the top down, and I know the library staff already does this, suggests that people make the library into what they want in their own personal usage requests, not making us decisions for other people who use our library. So that said, I'd love to see the numbers. It's looking great. I appreciate the library staff. The attacks, the accusations, the assumptions that are made to our library staff are atrocious and are coming from the people who are wanting to ban books and accuse our librarians of pushing porn. We do not have pornography in our libraries. You may personally consider it pornography, but the legal definition would require you to call the authorities on our library staff if we truly had porn in our libraries. What else did I want to say? That was big. Oh, and the school board has come to their senses to a degree in that they have pulled back from their policies of banning books, one at a time, because people complained. They have realized that they are impacting the work of our school professionals. You guys are doing the same with our library staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other persons who would like to speak this morning? Okay. Thank you. Then we're ready to move on. The next item on our agenda is presentation by Mrs. Ann Schaber, who is the CPA consultant that is working with us on the FY 2023 audit. I'm going to do her by Zoom.
Hold on just one second. Okay, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Excellent.
Okay. Well, what I thought I might do, but I'll talk a little bit about what the approach might be, and we can see if this works okay for everyone, is I thought I might just give a quick overview of my work with the library and the timeframe that we are on with this work in working to get the fiscal 2023 financial report finalized, and then just open it up for any questions from Board of Trustee members. Does that meet with approval, or would you suggest a different format?
I think that will work well for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Well, as a matter of background, I am a CPA who's done all my work here in Virginia. I've got about a 35-year career span at this point in life. I spent some time with one of the large international public accounting firms, KPMG, right out of school. Attended James Madison University, where I got a degree in accounting. So I worked for KPMG for about four and a half years, and as part of that work, did some local government audit work. And so then I joined the city of Roanoke, Virginia, and I served Roanoke for 20 years. I started out as a system analyst and then concluded my service there 10 years ago this month, actually, as the Director of Finance. I loved my time there, learned a lot, and was fortunate to be able to get involved in a lot of different activities, a lot of work preparing financial statements, coordinating the annual audit, managing the financial system, and then overseeing all things accounting, as well as our pension system and real estate valuation, which was one of the items that reported to me. So then 10 years ago, I made a little change of career. It was at a time when my husband retired and then went back to work for another employer, and so I took the opportunity to start a consulting practice, which I've had in place now for 10 years. And I stick to my knitting. I work with local governments and related entities, and mainly in the area of accounting and financial reporting, assisting with getting ready for the annual audit and things of that nature. Sometimes I'll do special projects, like assist a county with a possible city-to-town reversion. I assisted a county, or a town, rather, with a possible annexation suit. And so I do, kind of do a variety of work, all in local government finance. And so in pretty early 2024, I started discussing with the library at Hanover County's referral to assist them with the, at that time, possibly the wrap-up of the fiscal 2022 audit and then also with the 2023 audit. Now, as it turns out, I did not do any work in support of the 2022 audit. That work was completed without any involvement from me, but, you know, probably late first quarter of the year, I started getting a bit involved with the fiscal 2023 audit wrap-up. You probably are all aware that that represented the first audit to be completed by a new accounting firm, PD Mayers, so change in auditor, following a competitive process that was led by the county to select a new auditor. And so getting the fiscal 2023 audit done was, of course, dependent on wrapping up the 2022 audit. And so once that was done, the attention turned to the 2023 audit. My work with the library really began in great earnest around April, when we started, it's a series of, I guess you could just call it back-and-forth correspondence about, with regard to a review of the financial statements. At the beginning, there was some work to help finalize preparation of some of the key schedules that are part of the financial report, and since that time, we've gone back and forth with a review of the draft financial report. Now, that document is about an 80-page document. It's in Microsoft Word. Of course, us accountants really like to play in Excel the most, but that's okay. Somehow, Word is where it's at. And so I've now completed a review of the second draft, and we're basically on a weekly back-and-forth schedule, going through these iterations until we can get a report totally finalized. Ken Catron is the lead on actually what we would call the preparation of the report, and ultimately, it needs to be signed off by PD Mayers as your auditor, that they feel like everything is materially correct. Many of you may be aware that we have a Friday weekly status meeting that is attended by myself, by library staff, by some county staff members, by our auditors, and then by up to two Board of Trustee members. And those meetings have been very helpful in just keeping an open dialogue, making sure that we're on track with our project, and also just keeping everyone informed about some status items. In touching just briefly on the dates, I guess basically the first draft of the financial report came to me right around the 25th of the month of April, and then And then I provided comments back to library staff. A second draft came to me on May the 10th. And then last Friday, the 17th, that's right, that was last Friday, is that right? I sent comments back to library staff. The next key deliverable date will be this Friday, when the third draft is due to me. I've committed to send comments back on Tuesday, the 28th. And then our plan is to hand over the draft report to the external auditor on Wednesday, the 29th. They will give us comments back the following Wednesday, the 5th. And then we will give comments back to them then the next Wednesday. That's the, I want to make sure I don't lose track of my dates here, that's the 12th. And then the final document is intended to be issued June 19th, which is one week in front of the next Board of Trustees meeting. I guess what I would say about this document is, in the accounting and financial reporting world, it is highly technical. There are a lot of disclosures about pensions, about other retirement benefits for other post-employment benefits that are provided to retirees. That work entails the work of actuaries in order to determine the present value calculations of benefits to be paid over the remaining expected lives of retirees. So it gets pretty complex in terms of a lot of disclosures that are required, a lot of calculations. And then we also have some liability computations that have recently come into play on leases and technology subscription arrangements that are just adding to the complexity of the financial report. And so it is a pretty long report at 80 pages. I think that overall, everything is going fairly well according to schedule. I think one of the things that those of you who have been able to attend some of the Friday status meetings have heard us speak about is that in the future, a recommended change would be that the library staff, perhaps with some assistance and support from me, prepare schedules and provide information that is then handed over to the CPA firm, the external auditor firm, and allow them to actually prepare the, what we would call camera-ready or print-ready document. They really are a little better positioned, well, they're a lot better positioned to do the printing and the publication and just get the document put together, if you will, this 80-some-page document. That's not a change that we can make right now on the fly for fiscal 23. We're going to have to keep working together to get this fiscal 23 report finished here in the next few weeks, or next month, I guess. But that is a change that we would recommend in looking toward next year. And then, as I say, next year, it's right ahead of us. You know, June 30th, 2024, is going to be here before we know it, and it will be time to think about the year-end close process, you know, making any year-end accounting entries that are needed, and preparing for the next audit, which we would like to see done in the fall on a more, getting back to a more timely process for that, so that we can then complete the fiscal 24 audit much sooner than what we're looking at right now and get, you know, get ourselves back on a proper timeframe. I will, of course, serve the library at its pleasure. It will be up to the library to determine what services it may need from me. But I do feel like I can provide, help augment what might be needed, what might be beneficial there, just because I've done this quite a bit. I assist the town of Ashland with its annual close process and audit and financial reporting cycle. That works pretty well. We do work with the same audit firm, PB Mayers, for that. And that is a situation where they draft the financial report, send it over to us. We do the review and provide comment, but what we're not doing is that grueling preparation work that can really be time-consuming. So I think that's my update for now. I don't want to take up too much time on your agenda today. I am pleased to answer questions if anyone has any of those for me. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Yes, Joe.
I hope I pronounced your name right. Ms. Schauer?
That's right.
Okay, good. I'm Joe O'Connor. I'm on the library board, and I haven't been sitting in on the audit committee. We have an audit committee that has been working with you directly. I've heard some of this before, but some of the things you just said, I've written down. And my questions are simple, I think. So you're saying that we should be complete by the 19th? June 19th, we should have the final report to the auditor?
Yes. So the financial statements are actually a publication of management.
Right.
Management publishes a financial report. However, no management group is going to publish a financial report until it receives the auditor's opinions. And so, yes, you're correct, sir. June 19th is the date that we have on our schedule for the audit firm to give us the opinions that would go in the final document. And at that point, the fiscal 23 financial statements would be considered complete and ready for issuance.
Okay, right. I've been through a lot of audits in my career, so I understand that part. The other questions I have, and maybe folks on the audit committee have heard of these. When you suggest starting earlier for next year and the recommended changes you have, you said fall of 2024. Fall when? October, November, September? What? What window are we looking to do that in?
You know, I might have to defer to Tom on the exact. I'm not sure if we've talked about an exact schedule for that yet or not. Have we talked with them about when they would want to do the final field work in the fall?
You may, I mean, someone else is going to have to answer that part of the question.
Right. So we have not had that conversation yet.
Discussion yet?
Yeah. We're kind of working through this as we go. First, really first and foremost, is trying to get 23 done.
I know.
I have.
And you have one follow-up comment I will make about this. And like, I have a regional jail client that I work with every year, I mean, constantly. I basically serve as their outsourced finance director. The local governments are required to submit some materials to the auditor of public accounts by mid-December, and those do have to have audit opinions as well. And so sometimes what we see is that the CPA firms are pushed pretty hard to get all that local government work done, and other entities, like regional jails or like a regional library, sometimes end up a little bit later. However, I do get the sense from talking to PB Mayers that they feel like they want to do this work in the fall. So, you know, my thinking probably would be that we'll get through this push that we're on right now to finish fiscal 23. And then pretty soon, we can, I mean, we probably should talk to them pretty soon about when will final field work be done? And that's what really drives all of the schedule, is when they want to come out and audit. They'll probably spend a couple of days, maybe a week, doing that field work. If they say October, you know, that's, we'll kind of back into some things from there, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. Like I said, I'm familiar. I'm also familiar with local governments' pecking order of regional jails and the government itself, the local government itself, and the requirements they're under, and where a regional library may fall in that. I just want to make sure that we don't, once again, fall as the last thing looked at, and we end up here again, where we're in May, June, and our staff, our local regional library staff is saying, what you've been doing, you're late. And we're being pushed, we're actually being pushed by someone, pushed back. No disrespect to you, but we're being pushed back by priorities set, by folks that are asking us where our audit is. So if we can start earlier, we can, and have the attention, I believe we can make the dates that they're so concerned about.
Anne? I want to be honest with you. I'm having just a little trouble hearing you. I want to make sure if you have a question that I catch it. I think I'm hearing you basically say you're a little concerned about us getting this done. But if you have another question, if you could maybe repeat it.
Okay. The other question is making sure that we receive a priority next year that will not put us in this situation again. Whether, you know, fall is a big window.
Right, right.
And it's, and fall can be a subjective window. What I may think is fall, other folks may not think is fall, right?
Yeah, I think how about if the team plans to take a discussion with PB Mayers about planning fiscal 24, and then we can follow back up with the board on that plan?
Okay, that's not, I'm just mentioning my concern aloud. So it's in the minutes, and everyone knows that it's an equal concern for the whole, the entire board.
I have a question.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the work you've been doing.
Yes, sir.
It's not a critique, it's a question.
I just have a quick question. I'm Barbara from Goochlin. Is it, I'm just confirming, you said your work began with the PRL on April 25th? Was that your first billable work for this?
I don't know. No, no, the April 25th was the day that the first draft came to me. I can, let me, hold on a second, I have a little schedule about work, and I can give you a sense for that. Yeah, it looks like our first dialogue and discussions with one another were like in late January. And then February, we spent some time together, kind of, you know, kind of discussing a little bit about the plan. One thing I will, I can mention, again, those that have attended some of the status meetings have heard this. I think one thing that changed just a little bit from our very first discussion was that I did get pulled in at some point, I guess it would have been like in March and April, to help with preparing a couple of the schedules that are in the front of your audited financial statement. Unfortunately, governmental accounting is pretty complicated in that we use two different methods with a lot of our accounting. We use one method that is fairly cash-oriented, not entirely cash, but we call it modified accrual accounting. And then, that's, I don't know, we also convert to full accrual accounting, and we include a schedule for both what laypersons might think of as a balance sheet and an income statement that walks you from the modified method to the full accrual method for both the income statement and the balance sheet. And so there's six schedules between all of what I've just described. And so there was some time prior to late April, it might have been kind of early April, I guess, if we would have been looking at my schedule here, where I was assisting in getting some of that all balanced. There were some challenges in getting all of that balanced and reconciled. And so that was the preliminary work before I started, you know, this review of these subsequent drafts. Another thing that I did some review of and worked with Tom and Ken on, and the audit firm, a little bit more theoretically, and then I did do a review of the materials. There was a decision made as part of the fiscal 23 audit to what we call capitalize the materials that are in circulation, mainly books, but then also some audio and e-materials as well, thinking that it's not appropriate to expense those every year, but instead we should treat them as assets, put them on our balance sheet as assets, and then depreciate them over a five-year schedule. Now, Ken did all of the heavy lifting on that, but I worked a bit with the team on just the approach, you know, the methodology, the approach, what the depreciation period would be, and then reviewing accounting entries and just talking with PB Mayers about that particular process as well. So there was some work like that, that, you know, I would call really, that's more part of the year-end close process than it is the report preparation process. But that was a part that I assisted with, you know, like a little bit earlier than this report iteration. All of these status meetings that we've been holding on Fridays, they got started, I guess it was in April? Yeah, it looks like those all started in April. And we are on a weekly Friday routine for that, pretty much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, Jim. I'm Jim Taylor, Deputy County Administrator from Hanover County. And I just want to thank those of you who are involved in the review committee, taking time each week to spend on this process. And I want to thank you for hiring Anne. I think we're very lucky to have her. And so that's the type of thing as a board, I think, that you can do to support the process, is to provide resources like this. You know, I think we were initially hoping that we might have this wrapped up by today's meeting. We quickly realized that that wasn't practical, and so shooting for that June 26th presentation, I think, is, you know, kind of where we are, and we're fine with that. And I know Anne has provided some recommendations moving forward that I think could really help in terms of the auditors preparing some of these statements. And I understand that it would only cost probably a few thousand dollars. And in my opinion, that would be well worth it to make sure you run back to meet the schedule moving forward. So thank you all, and thank you, Anne.
You're very welcome. It's my pleasure.
Thank you, Jim.
Any other questions?
Could I ask a question, please? Kristy Schumacher. We've met on the calls before. You mentioned in your report that you sent us last Friday that there are some things that you are waiting for from PRL and some repeat things that you've asked for and waiting for. Are you getting those things, or do you feel like things are moving forward in those areas?
Sure. Thank you for that question. And I will comment on that a bit. And so the comments that I sent on Friday, the 17th, basically were my comments on draft number two, okay? So draft number one comments went on the first of May, and then another draft was produced by the library staff. And Tom and I had a discussion about that this week as well. I would probably say candidly that I would have liked to have seen my comments from draft one more thoroughly responded to. I do feel that my comments on draft number two, in large part, were repetitive of comments that I made on draft one. I feel like my sense is from my discussions with Tom this week that there is a sincere commitment on the part of Tom to see to it that the comments on draft two are responded to. I've shared with him that I feel like, you know, there are a few of my comments that are a little nitpicky. There's a couple that are more about format and fonts and appearance. However, a lot of my comments, I think, are going to be items that if we don't address them for me, those same comments are going to show up by PB Mayers when we start sending drafts to them. And so I would probably recommend that rather than wait for them to fuss at us, not fuss, but rather than wait for them to say, hey, you need a long-term liability disclosure on this, that, and the other, that we go ahead and get that resolved now. And so I'm expecting that the draft that comes to me this Friday, the 24th, should address those items. And I have, of course, also indicated that, you know, if there's an area here or there where the library staff feels like, hey, this looks really messy or complicated when you do this for us, I'm not opposed to talking about that. You know, for the most part, I'd like the library team to address the comments, but if there's something here or if there's something here or there that someone needs me to do, I'm, I'm open to that discussion, so.
Okay, thank you. And also, just for my information, who's responsible for the MDNA part of the, is Ken responsible for that section, or is that you?
I, I wrote the draft.
You've written the draft?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, because the MDNA was in Word itself, pretty mu, pretty much the whole MDNA is in Word, there might be a chart or two that's like an image. I did make some edits using Word track changes to that material that I hope will expedite the completion of that, presuming that my edits are acceptable to the team there. Whereas in the rest of the document, because a lot of the rest of the document has images that have been pulled into it, my approach to making comments for that was to set up a separate Word file with comments that referenced pages and, and just listed a comment. So I think that, that could, obviously that's going to take longer for library team members to go through and respond to.
Right. And when you came in the end of April, having you put your spreadsheet together with the timelines, I think was really helpful for all of us to have an overview. So earlier you had said that the team could maybe get together with mayors and start working on that for '24. Is that something that you feel you could be a part of as well?
If, yes, at, at the library's pleasure, certainly. And I, I mean, I hope that I can be. I, I think that that would be a good, I think I can be a good resource for the library, and I think, as with all of my clients, the library can use as much or as little time out of my services as it desires, but yes, I think, I think it could be a good resource just to augment, and, and, I mean, I've spent my life auditing, or being audited, or whatever. And so I, yeah, I think it could really help, you know, push things along and get a good schedule built, and get a good plan built. I, I think all of us right now agree that it's best to have the auditors actually prepare the statements. I think we're all on board with that. It, I think there's going to be a minor fee adjustment for that, but a couple thousand dollars, which is, I think honestly, we're burning, we're burning more than that in chasing it around in the back and forth that we're, that we're doing this year. So I think it'll, I think it'll end up really being a win-win to do that.
Yeah, I agree. Is it possible to ask for that kind of planning for FY '24 by the next meeting, since we are approaching the June 30th?
I think so, especially based on some of the other discussion that I'm thinking we have today.
Okay, sorry. And I know that you mentioned in your report the possibility of asking PB mayors to attend the June meeting, are we going to do that?
That's been done.
That's been done, okay. So they are planning to attend by Zoom, or?
I'd have to go back and see what the response was, to be honest.
Yeah, and I am unfortunately not available for that June meeting, just due to a prior commitment that's on my calendar, but hopefully, I, I think, I mean, hopefully if everything goes according to our schedule, and, and I, I don't see any reason that it shouldn't, I think by the June 26 date, you've got a financial pack, a financial report with, with a pretty red bow on it, and PB, it, it would be appropriate at that point for PB mayors just to make comments to you at, at that point, as the governing body, about the report. And, you know, that, you know, it's, it's the audited financial statements, but they're also going to have some comments for management, and so I think it is appropriate at that juncture that they be the one speaking to you, addressing you, rather than me. I'm sorry that I won't be able to be present for that meeting, but really, it's probably most important that they be there.
Thank you so much for all of your help, we really appreciate it, having you come in.
You're, you're very welcome, it's my honor to be able to assist the library.
Great, any other questions, comments? Okay, I think, thank you, Ann, we appreciate, as the others have said, we appreciate all the help you've given us, and we appreciate the help you're going to give us, and we appreciate you being here today.
Yes, absolutely, thank you so very much, I appreciate all the kind remarks, and it's truly my pleasure to assist, it's, it's what I do, and I am glad to try to help any way that I can.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is a new item that we've put on here, or, no, it's, the next, the next thing is, is Tom's report, I apologize, Tom.
I think you have the consent agenda first.
Oh, consent agenda, yes, you're right, okay. Under the consent agenda, we now have the approval of the draft minutes from April 9th, and we have the acceptance of the April 2024 warrants, acceptable, acceptance of the April 2024 board financial report, and acceptance of the April 2024 monthly deposit record. We have pulled out the fund schedule, correct? All right, do I have a motion that we can approve the, our consent agenda? Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a point of order. I was, I've read the minutes from April 9th, but I wasn't there. In my past life, that taught me that I shouldn't be voting for the minutes of a meeting I didn't attend. So I don't want to force y'all to have to have a voice vote.
Two, three, four, five, no, we have, we have, we have a, a quorum without you voting, so we have six.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just abstaining. I'm voting for the rest, so I'll be abstaining for number one.
Gotcha, sounds good.
If that, if that's good enough, okay.
All right, in that case.
I got a nod from the attorney, so I'm good.
Okay, in that case, then, do I have a motion for the acceptance of the minutes, or the consent agenda?
With that, I'll.
With that added to it, that Joe is not voting on the minutes?
With that, I'll, I'll recommend approval of the consent agenda.
Okay. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Discussion?
Oh, is there any discussion?
I have some questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Are they extensive questions, because we can pull those out of the?
No, they're pretty quick.
Okay.
Pretty quick. On the budget report, I see year-to-date for King &amp; Queen, $118,000 has been received, but in the, in a report, I was note, aware that they were going to pay third and fourth quarter at the end of May, so is that a correct number?
So, yeah, the report that you're looking at is at the end of April?
Right.
So it's not count things that have happened in May?
I, I realize that, but it seems to me, does the $118,000, that seems high to me, that's all I'm saying, that what, they only have announced due of $21,624, and two months' payment, two, two quarters' payment is more than $21,000. What, am I missing something?
Well, so, most of the information with King &amp; Queen, you might remember, has been guesswork. They never provided us with a number for their appropriation. They asked us to continue to operate the branch on July 1, as we had operated it on June 30. But we were doing that without information from them about what the appropriation would be. So I can't really tell you what they budgeted. Through the process of the MOU, the agreement was that they wanted to remain in PRL through the fiscal year, which there are quarterly, basically, charges for the shared service piece. And as it ended up, they operated or funded the branch operation through January, which gives us a total without having an amount of funding at the beginning of the year. And what they are agreeing to pay is the remainder of four quarters of the shared service, being a member of PRL, and seven months of operating the branch, July through January of 2024.
And that is where you get the $118,000?
No. The $118,000, when the board approved that in the budget, because I needed to have something to operate that was intended to cover the first quarter of the shared service, and I believe the first three months of operating the branch, as we tried to work through getting some other information for what they were going to do.
Is it ever appropriate to adjust that? I know we did some adjustments to the FY '24 budget last time.
And, I mean, in my opinion, it's sort of a moot point to, to do that, because we've operated for, you know, ten months of the year already without, without that.
So, do, do we know how much we're going to get from them in May 28? Is that a guess?
It's not a guess, it was calculated on four quarters of the shared service.
Right.
And seven months of the operating. And I believe, if you give me a second, I can tell you what the dollar amount is.
Is it based on the schedule that we got in the MOU? Is that what?
The schedule, the printed schedule that I provided to you had that amount of.
In December? That, that spreadsheet we got in December?
This, this spreadsheet, and I don't know, I'm not sure which spreadsheet you're referring to for December, but I provided one at one of the last meetings that, that we've had, April or for the May 13th. And it, it really is, what they owed is what had not been paid since January 1 basis.
$23,421. $23,421.
No.
So, so about $46,000, kind of? I mean, I, I'm so in the dark about this, I don't understand, I, I'm, but, okay, you know what, this is a full discussion, we can have it another time about it, but I just.
I think we're going to talk about King &amp; Queen again today.
Yeah, okay, you are, we'll go back to that.
So we're sort of saving that agenda item.
Got it.
But the, the schedule, I hope we'll go to the podium, the schedule that I've provided previously detailed all of those, and the balance due pieces, the balance due, which included their third quarter, which is $35,321,000. That's a quarter's worth and a month, January. And then for the fourth quarter, the $23,421, so it's a total of $58,742. When we did the true-up, I've already contacted the county, they had not received the request for payment, it had been sent through the mail, which is how we've typically done. We did email, but in the hundred and, not hundred and eighteen thousand, uh, no, that's $118,270, that really actually put them, it's sounding a little silly, four dollars over, so we reduced the $58,742 by the four bucks, just to be even. It never helps anybody to be off by that, just have the conversation with the auditor.
I get it.
But, so it's, that's, that's what they're paying, that's what will be sent ACH to the library as a count on January, their next, which is King &amp; Queen's next check. Does that help?
Yeah, it does, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Then I just have two more quick questions.
Yes.
In expenses, year-to-date.
Madam Chair, can't we, can't we, the consent agenda didn't have, put this at appropriate time, but this is, this is beyond consent agenda discussion.
Do we want to pull this one out, and then we can talk about that along with the fund schedule? We can?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, do we want to modify the, the motion, so that we are pulling out the budget report, the board financial statement?
Yes.
Is that the one you wanted to address?
Yeah, I just wanted to look at the board, the budget report, I have two more questions, it won't be long.
All right, so.
So moved.
So moved, are you okay with that? All right, are we ready to take a vote, then? Okay, so we are voting on just the, the draft minutes, the April warrants, and the monthly deposit record as part of the, our, part of our consent agenda. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so the consent agenda has been, been moved, and we moved the other report, the fund schedule that you wanted to look at, to right after the consent agenda. So we, I think we could do, you could go ahead and finish with your questions with this, and then we can move into the fund schedule.
Okay, just quickly, real quick. My question is about rents slash facilities. Original budget 168, year-to-date, we're, we're over budget, and I'm just wondering, can you just shed some light on that? Is that repairs, is that included repairs as well?
I think the majority of that is the money that we've provided for the West Point renovation. That had not been, you'd agreed to do that, but remember, we had not amended the budget, and we had not amended the budget at the end of April. The budget was amended in May. And again, this report is, is through April. So, I mean, Ken actually asked me, he's like, do we want to go ahead and use the numbers? And I said, no, I think that's confusing, because it, it was not in place then. But the amended budget covers that, balances that out.
Just last week, we approved an additional $150,000.
Yeah, up to. Okay, thank you for that. And same with utilities, over budget utilities?
Yeah, utilities are very difficult to budget. It's hard for us to predict what the weather will be eighteen months out, whether it'll be hot or cold, so you're almost always off with utility costs. But again, that, that had an adjustment.
But there wasn't anything, any big repair, or anything that stuck out?
No, I mean, utilities are what we're paying to Verizon or Dominion.
Sure.
Yes, water, sewer, gas.
Okay.
But, but it is notoriously difficult to figure that out, so.
All right, those are my only two questions on that, on the budget report. And I did, on the fund balance.
Yes.
Yes, we can, we may move on to the fund balance, yes.
I look at the fund schedule, I, I would like to propose y'all to look at this, I'd like to shed a little more light on the reporting of the monthly fund balance, just to see where the money's coming from, where it's going to, the money that's in that balance. And I've broken it out in a spreadsheet for reporting from here on out. So I, I'm passing this out to y'all to look at, and we can talk about it at the next meeting, but this is just for your consideration, just to get more, more information on the fund balance, because I, I would like some more clarity. And that's all I have.
Will you be emailing back to John Edwards and?
Yes, Ryan, yeah, yeah, it's just, I certainly will.
Okay, we'll hold off on questions on this until the next meeting, but please, please do take a look at it, we will put that on the agenda for next meeting. All right, the next item on our agenda.
Do we need to go ahead and approve the, the board financial report and?
Yes, we do, yes, we do.
The fund schedule?
That's a, that's a good, good point. Okay, so, do I have a motion that we can approve the library budget report and the fund schedule that we had pulled out of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving the, these two reports, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so those are approved. The next item on our agenda, which is now that one buried. Yeah, I was going to say, the director's report, thank you. Okay, so we will have Tom.
In addition to the report that I had sent previously, I've got a few things addendum. Not peeling your, the building is coming along, Mr. Taylor let me know that the county posted a video on Facebook recently, that's, that's a. Is that, that's a drone video, or is it just inside? Anyway.
It's a drone video too, and inside.
It has, it has good, good, good video to see how far the project has progressed. We may have a little bit of a slide on the date for completion, based on some of the work that's happening still. But I don't have anything further to solidify that at this point. As some of our attendees have already noted, King William did approve their budget Monday night. I've got the schedule here for Upper King William and West Point branches, because we would have a reduction in hours. One clarification is that it's not twelve hours a week. It is thirteen hours a week for a branch. And the schedule has been developed based on what we know about usage patterns. Keeping the hours where we already know we have the most usage, trying to keep the branches somewhat consistent. We don't believe we have a lot of overlap from what we know of customers' usage patterns in people using one branch and then the other, you know, back and forth. People, people kind of live in West Point. They live in the Lower Nether. They live up here. Whichever way their lives take them is which branch they use.
Tom, could I, could I, a question was asked in regard to, I think I can answer it. You can tell me if I'm correct. A question was asked about the new West Point library coming in under the budget that was set aside. Those are capital funds, correct?
Those are capital funds.
So, it's up to, it's up to the town council of West Point, whether they want to move capital funds into operational funds.
I would probably disagree with that piece.
Okay.
West Point is not a member of the regional library, you know, for the funding support.
Well, where did, I guess, where did the funds come from for that?
So, you know, the agreement that the town made with the library and with King William County, they used the operating, not the operating, they used the budget for the building that they had gotten, having gotten a couple of estimates for construction, which was right around a million bucks. They ended up basically operating as their own general contractor, which is why they've been able to do this for considerably less money.
Okay.
And both the library and the county have been reimbursing the town for those expenses on a monthly basis. You know, they're not, the town is not pulling this. It's, I would kind of argue, it's never been the town's responsibility to fund the hours for the branch. That's been, it's a county-funded facility through PRL. The motion, I guess it wasn't really a motion because it only got, it only got discussed. No one, no one made a motion.
Actually, actually, we did have a motion.
At the King William Board of Supervisors meeting on Monday.
Oh, at the King, no, no, no. This is for the motion for the money.
Yeah, so, what was proposed was to use that money that had been allocated from King William County for the project and fund the library's hours, fund part of a request with the town of West Point Fire Department and fund part of the request from the Menkewet Fire Department. That was brought up by Mr. Hodges, who's the supervisor of West Point under the county. It was discussed and no action was taken.
Okay, but that would take action at the board supervisor level?
That was the King William Board of Supervisors.
Okay, not, not action here?
Not action here.
Okay, that's, that's the point, I guess I was trying to get to, in the distinction between capital funds and operational funds.
Which is still, which is still a conversion that we need to have.
Which gives us back, which gets us back to the things we have to balance in a budget, I mean, a budget audit.
Did the board supervisors give you, the King William Board of Supervisors give you any indication why they were not willing to fund the request?
It seemed to be part of the austere approach that they feel they're taking with their budget this year.
So, did, did it come into play that they are not giving their employees an increase this year? And they're basically funding the library to do an increase for their employees? Is that?
There was, there was some discussion about that. And when I say there was some, Mr. Ashcraft, county administrator, when he was presenting his 25 budget and the changes, noted that they had funded an increase for their staff in December, December of '23. So, I mean, so they have given their staff an increase since July 1. They gave them a mid-year one. And there was another action taken at the meeting, which I believe changed their salary scale to improve some of their salaries for some of their staff.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, they're not giving merit increase, which is what the library board is probably going to do when you approve the budget. But they have, they have taken some other actions. So, it's kind of, it's, I don't know if it's right to say that they're not doing anything for their staff. But that's a different question.
I just have a real quick question, and probably, Ellen, you might be the one that needs to answer this. That when the motion was made to commit the hundred and fifty thousand for the building, that was made back on December 8th, and at the time, the motion says that Mike Smith made a motion for the board to commit up to a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the board reserves for the West Point building project. I'm just asking for a clarification. If we say up to, and I know that John had said that, you know, there was quite a bit of savings. Does that money stay with West Point, or does that money come back to?
So, you know, it does not, that's one of the things I was saying with Joe, is we didn't write a check for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so, that motion, if you remember, that was showing your intent, it didn't appropriate the money. Because we've had that discussion again this year with the new board. And the decision was to stay with that commitment. The town has been doing the renovations, expending money on the project, and then they ask for the reimbursement based on the percentage commitment that the hundred and fifty thousand dollars was for the project. So, we're not, we've not written a check for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We haven't written multiple checks for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There is money left there, you know. In my time with the library board and my knowledge of, before my time with the library board, the library board does not supplement the operational piece for the branches. That's sort of the idea.
It would make us happy if you wanted to do that. We're sad.
Changing, that's sort of changing that from, from capital to operating.
Right.
And, and when I say that, I mean, because we've had cuts from each one of the individual counties at different times, since I've been director. You might remember coming out of the pandemic, we used money from the reserve to cover the increase. And so, our funding request was flat to the localities. And when we did that, I reminded all four localities as we did so, you know, we're helping you this much, but it's going to hurt next year because the request will be covering that and whatever other requests we have. And, you know, I don't, it's like, no good deed goes unpunished. You know, that, that was a conversation that, you know, I had to go back and remind them, some of them, to say, this is, this is how we did this. So, that idea, you know, it is, it is the board's decision to do that, but that is another possibility of doing something with those, with that gap in hours. One of the members of this board in King William was asking me, so what you're saying is you still intend to give your staff a raise when we're not giving you an increase? And my response was, yes. It said, you know, eighty-five percent of our funding partners have agreed to this already. We're the fifteen percent that has not. I mean, I don't know, I don't know that they understand, you know, everything kind of about the operation, the fact that, you know, two-thirds of the library staff are part-time, no insurance, no benefits, compared to what they're doing with the county and providing all the other things. It is, I think it is kind of one thing if you have a majority full-time staff and, you know, you're holding the kind of entire compensation package together. We don't have that for most of our folks. Not, not kind of to pick, but even with Hanover, I believe the library has more part-time employees than all of Hanover County government.
Parks and Parks, you know, maybe we could catch it, but you're right.
So, it's a significantly different, you know, picture.
I know that Mr. Edwards mentioned last time that the King William Board of Supervisors is a new group of people. Are board of trustee members from King William meeting with those new board of supervisor members? Or have you sat down with them to try and help them understand the situation, or what's a good way forward?
Yeah, so, I mean, we've had regular meetings with the county administrator. I've been to the King William Board of Supervisors meetings multiple times this year. I presented the budget. I've said all of these things to them previously. Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't, I can't go kind of beyond that in terms of what they're understanding or picking up on it.
Mary, have you and John met with any of the new people or tried to build some relationships there?
John is very close with Bill Hodges. I have talked to my supervisor, and it hasn't, he hasn't been very favorable.
And what's her recent, Mary?
His? Honestly, I don't know. He's never really said. I know his wife uses the West Point branch.
Did you remind me?
I mean, I mentioned this in the meeting last Monday, like, obviously, I've only been involved for a short time, but we see kind of a repeat pattern, as we saw with King and Queen, not wanting to fund full hours. And I just want to make sure that we, as a library, are being proactive with communicating with King William and, you know, making sure that we can find ways forward because I don't want to have another situation where we have a partner withdrawing. So, I don't know. It's obviously not my county, but I think it would be worth trying to reach out and have conversations.
Okay. Good comment.
We have.
All right.
We have. I know, I can speak to the past. We have.
I think it's good on any issues, any, it's good for us, since that's who's appointed us to keep in touch with our, with our boards. Yeah, I agree.
Good, Tom.
I think, I think there's been some, I suspect the conversation's not entirely over yet, but we'll see. But the last time that this happened, you know, the conversations continued. From my memory, it wasn't resolved until June 27th, the last meeting that the King William Board had. The last time that this happened, we had asked our customers to contact the board supervisors. And I believe a good number of them did. I think that had a fair amount of impact. I did not do that this time. I'm quite honest, a part of the reason why I didn't was the evening that I presented the budget, Mr. Hodges made a point of telling his colleagues exactly what had happened before. And that was, you will hear from the library people when you try to, try to not fund the hours. So, they had really heard from our customers that time. So, so we'll see.
Just a comment, but we're a population of less than nineteen thousand people. Maybe, it might be nineteen thousand now. We were close to getting to that. We had library visits, about five thousand and thirty-five people. So, that's, that's, that's a lot.
Was that for last month?
Yes.
That was for last month?
Yes.
And granted, we are still receiving visits from the King and Queen customers. So, that's, that's likely somewhat inflated for us right now. Something in next fiscal year to see different in the statistics.
I would like to make a comment that it's been made clear here at this meeting, right this minute, that it is important for the board of trustees members to meet with their supervisors and to field comments, questions, and that when you do meet with a supervisor, it is not indeed a secret conspiracy meeting, and which we have been accused of, that it is an open and honest discussion that is important because they appoint us, and therefore, when they ask to meet with us, we oblige. And that is how it works, and they, obviously, every member is familiar with members of their board, and that the public should understand that is part of our job as an appointee, so.
That is true. And I would probably say that this board is having more contact with members of the board supervisors than we've had in some years, and that's a good one.
It's, it's an expectation. It's not a secret meeting. It's something that's part of what we are called to do.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments about the report that we received from Tom?
Oh, I found the parts that are very informative. I liked hearing, seeing the reports from all the branches. That was really, really good.
Yes.
Thank you. That format was a little bit easier to compile this time.
Really, that was great.
All right, I think we can move on then. The next item on our budget is new, and it is going to be an item that we're going to continue to have, and that is our council updates. And so, I invite Ellen.
Good morning, everybody. Ellen Boyer, attorney in the office of the Hanover County Attorney. So, I wanted to just touch on one thing. There have been a couple of issues that have perked up from the, from the board of trustees related to FOIA. And so, I just wanted to take a minute and, and I think what I'll try to do with this segment, to the extent it's useful to you all as, as the board of trustees, is just sort of, as I get issues come up between meetings, I'll sort of assemble them and then try to address them very quickly. I'll try not to take more than, say, five minutes of your time. But one issue that keeps perking up is this question of FOIA and what constitutes an electronic meeting under FOIA. It's particularly relative to email, not so much an actual meeting of the board of trustees and how you participate in that electronically. That's a completely separate issue. But one question that's come up is, when does an email exchange become, or when is it threatened to become, to have the potential to be an electronic meeting? And so, what I wanted to clarify is, the board of trustees can receive emails as a board, the full board. So, Tom can send out an email to the entire board openly. That's absolutely fine. That's, email's a very trusted and usual, common way of communicating now. A lot of information to a large number of people, so that's absolutely fine. What becomes complicated and what, what begins to verge into an electronic meeting is when there's a high simultaneity of responses. So, one board member gets the email and responds, replies all to everyone and says, hey, I'm concerned about X. And then another board member, a minute later, responds and says, I see your concern, replies all to everybody again, and says, I see your concern about X. I'm concerned about X too. Tom, what are we going to do about this? And then a third board member comes in a minute later and says, wait a minute. I don't, I think y'all are overblowing this out of proportion. We don't need to worry about it. We'll deal with it at the next meeting. But that's when you have, that's when you have what looks like an electronic meeting. Because suddenly, emails are flying through the, through the ethernet, right? And everybody's communicating, and it starts to look like you're actually on a Teams meeting. And everybody's communicating and it starts to look like you're actually on a Teams meeting and you all are communicating with each other in real time. That's when it gets complicated. So, getting an email, getting up an email from, from me or from Tom or from Jim and it's directed to the whole board, that's fine. And it's even fine, really, from my perspective, if one person responds and says, hey, you didn't attach the documents you said you were going to attach, that's fine. Or, hey, I don't understand, were we going to hear this at the next board meeting? And then I or Tom or Jim can respond and say, no, we're, this is just information. But the complicated thing becomes when more than one board member starts suddenly firing off replies all. And, and that's when suddenly, and you can imagine it, it begins to look like a meeting because everyone's replying in real time. And suddenly you've got a meeting. So, does that make, does that make sense? Does that?
It does.
Okay, okay. I, I hope that, I hope that clarifies it. The other thing I was thinking about was, it might be helpful if we did have, and I mentioned this to you, to Barbara a few months ago, Madam Chair, a few months ago, I think it might be helpful if we did a FOIA refresher. Would that be, would that be useful to the board?
Yes.
Okay, because I think one of the important things, I think a lot of times when you see, in my, my experience, a lot of times when you see FOIA training, it's training on the whole scope of FOIA. There is a lot about FOIA that I need to know, that I really need to focus on because my job is to make sure that, that my clients comply with FOIA. But there are a lot of things that, that, there are some key things you all do need to know, but you don't even know all the intricacies. I mean, if you want to, I'm happy to take your time and tell you. But the big thing you need to focus on is, when is FOIA triggered? You know, when, when do I need, when do I need to communicate with the attorney and say, hey, I think I got a FOIA request? Is, is that what this is and how do I respond? So, so that's generally what my training focuses on, what you need to know. Y'all need to know a lot as, as appointed officials for the, for the board. And so my training focuses on what do you need to know most pragmatically about FOIA? And when I, when I provide the training, I'll talk both about the document side, the record side, and then the meeting side. So, we'll talk about both aspects of FOIA. But, but anyway, that, that I hope will be helpful. And what I'll do is communicate with Tom and with the chair and try to work out the best meeting, you know, when things, you know, when your agenda might not be quite so full, but we could take a little time to do that. And probably, I wouldn't spend more than about thirty minutes. I can spend more, I can budget an hour if you want, but it, it's a dry topic and I'll try to make it as interesting as possible, but I'm afraid it's a bit of a dry topic. But, but I can give you as much time as you want, we can start with thirty minutes and go from there. And what I might mix in a little bit, too, is some parliamentary issues, just to, just to, that sometimes is weirdly enough a part of FOIA because it goes to meeting issues, right? In terms of how you, how you have meetings. So, anyway, I hope that's helpful and I will work with you all and we'll, we'll sort out which meeting that might be most valuable for.
And I have two motions that I, when Ellen and I spoke, that we wanted to go ahead and bring forward. The first one is I move that we have Ellen Boyer, our legal counsel from PRL, review the Pawmonkey Regional Library policies as was documented by Mrs. Boyer in her email that was sent on May twelfth, and recommend any changes that she thinks might be needed. We talked about it, we all agreed to, but we did not do a motion. And so that's why I'm bringing this motion forward. Do I have a second?
Can I ask a?
Now you can.
This was the one where you, you said you wanted to break them down into categories?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I will second that.
Yeah, we've got two seconds.
Oh, we have, I didn't hear, I didn't hear the second second, I'm sorry. I need here dates.
Any other questions on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion is passed. I have a second motion that she and I talked about. As Ellen's been looking at all our documentation, even though we have just reviewed our bylaws, she is going to take another, would like to take another look at those and, from a legal perspective for us. So, the second motion that I have is, I move that we have Ellen Boyer, our legal counsel for PRL, review the Pawmonkey Regional Library bylaws and offer any changes she thinks might be necessary. Do I have a second for that motion?
So moved.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, that's motion. I just made the motion.
You can't make a motion. Chairman can't make a motion.
So moved.
She did on the last one.
So moved.
I, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna.
I, I think, I think, I think that, I think that is, that is technically, that's technically correct, yes, that is. I think, I think to curate here, what we can do, the, the chair's already made the first motion, the motion has been adopted. I think, I think it's good. Would someone else like to just offer to sponsor the motion?
Barbara just did.
Okay, great, great, we're good.
And I'll make a second.
Okay. All those, are, are there any comments, questions for this? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Great.
Great, thank you, Ellen. Okay, next thing that we have on the agenda are standing committee reports. John is not here and we have not had a financial committee report since our last meeting. So, I would say there's no report from finance. Okay, the next committee is personnel. Ryan is not here, but Ryan did send an email to everyone this morning and I told him I would make sure that I brought this to the, to the board. And what we have is that Ryan sent to everybody the, the evaluation for Tom, the yearly evaluation that we do, and he is asking that all of the evaluations are sent back to him no later than June twelfth at 5:00 PM to be considered for review. And that when you do the review, we are, normally we would mail those, but there's been so many problems with US Mail. What we're asking is you PDF it before you send it and send it to Ryan only, okay? It would only go to him as the chair of the, of the Personnel Committee. We are asking to please do more than just a sentence or two. This is, this is important, you know, so you really do need to think through, make comments on it and make recommendations on it. Once he gets those back, then the Personnel Committee will meet to compile them and determine from there whether you go with the salaries and so forth. Does anybody have any questions about the?
That was, that was sent this morning?
That was sent this morning.
Okay.
Yeah, everybody should have it.
Do we have a tentative date for the Personnel Committee is supposed to meet?
At this point, I don't, that's up to Ryan. I, I would assume that it'll be a couple of days after the, the twelfth, so, but I don't, I don't know, I don't have a date yet. They're not giving a date for it. Okay? So, any other questions? Okay. As far as the ad hoc committees, the Long Range Planning Committee has not met, but I realize that when we talked at our last meeting, I gave the names of all the members of the Long Range Planning Committee and Tom, I left your name off. I apologize. Tom is on that committee also, so I just wanted to, to add that. The last of the committee, ad hoc committees, is our FY 2023 Audit Committee. And I, we've got three members that are rotating. I've looked into the three of you, do you have any additional things for the audit that you want to, want to add?
I think Anne covered it. Do you have some?
Yeah, I think to sort of follow up on Anne's report, looking at that schedule for the twenty-four audit, a big question for that will be if we're going to engage Mares to produce the statements, which would be a great hope. I did contact the audit partner for that question. She gave me the same info that she said in the audit meetings, she thinks it's going to be around three thousand, kind of, might be a little more, might be a little less. She also told me that they're willing to do a cap of four thousand, no matter what. Honestly, I think I can understand that because we're doing a lot of the heavy lift now from what we had twenty-two with Cherry to twenty-three, but that's all good. I, I believe that the approach that we're talking about using with Mares producing the statements and Anne helping us with the client-side work is likely going to be a very good return on the investment, cheaper than what we're doing now. I, I, I can't see that we're not spending more than three thousand dollars in our staff time between Ken and I and the help we get from the county books. So, I'm, I'm for that. We've already spent sixty-seven hundred dollars with Anne this year, so.
All right, in that case, is there?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, maybe I'm remembering this wrong because we don't have minutes from the April twenty-sixth, whatever our last meeting was. Didn't we vote to add ten thousand dollars?
That's in this year's budget for Anne.
Oh, okay, for twenty-four, gotcha.
Well, that was also to pay for the overage with PB Mares.
That's true.
So, yeah, and I apologize for not getting those out, that meeting was last week and it's May, so my kids are end of school, so I will get those out, too. But the increase was to cover Mares' fifty-fifty split that they had agreed on any overage this year above the contract price.
Okay. We need to.
So, I guess my question is, since that contract is actually with Hanover County and not with us as a library board, do any changes need to be made to that contract regarding fee or would this be a separate contract?
I'll verify with Hanover purchasing. I started with Mares to make sure I understood kind of what they're talking about. They felt like it was within the current contract in terms of how it was going for other services.
Okay, great.
Are we at a point that we should make a motion or should we wait until we've talked to the county to the finance people?
I mean, I think, I think, is your intent going to change if we need to adjust the contract? So, I think we would be ready to do it today. And that goes against kind of marching orders as we go into the twenty-four.
Okay, do I have a motion for us to employ PB Mares to do the financial statement and cap it at up to four thousand dollars for that particular charge?
So moved.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, or any other discussion before I go on? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. So, we can move forward with that. And Tom, does that mean then that once we've, once we've got them doing that, then we can really build the schedule that they're, that Anne was talking about?
Yeah, I don't think we'd be able to do that with that kind of unknown question.
Right, right, okay.
That, building the schedule is already also in motion moving forward, so.
All right, we are ready to move into all business and amazing, the first thing on there is audit updates, which I think we, I think we've covered. We've covered everything for that. Okay, I, I think we were trying to make sure that we, we got all the information. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is to talk about King and Queen County's departure updates, if there are any other updates that we need to discuss with King, King and Queen. Okay? Tom, I will.
I think there's four to pass. I believe that the last thing of the MOU has to do with the part where there was a request to have a newspaper ad.
Right, right.
And so what is being passed was a pretty brief bit of this draft text. We've already shared this with King and Queen staff and they're, they were fine with the text. The, their only request was that they did not believe that Goochland has approved the motion to have them leave.
Goochland has not done a, a formal resolution, you're absolutely right. Yeah, they did it verbally, but we, we had actually talked with them this last week about that. We still don't have a resolution, yes.
So, I mean, so.
We need to get that.
Expecting that to happen sometime in June, but we won't be placing the ad until that's announced.
Yeah, it should be the first, the board meeting in June.
But we did mention that, too.
All good, just any questions about that?
And that was the only other thing, we posted the notice that you had created, that's posted at the branch there, and they are going to split the cost of this ad, if that's correct.
That is correct.
Okay, good. All right.
And where will that ad be placed?
It's country courier.
Yeah, it's their local, the local paper here.
I noticed in the, in the reports from the branches that they are getting a lot of feedback from King and Queen residents about not being able to use the branches anymore. What is the procedure for employees in, in dealing with that? Are they?
I mean, they have some talking points. They, they try to explain to people why the board's taken the action. I think, I mean, honestly, people are upset with, with PRL and part of guessing maybe because there hasn't been a lot of information from the King and Queen, but that we're not going to provide the service rather than sort of the focus on what is happening in King and Queen. We've tried to, as the language in the ad and on the, you know, the green flyers, they're working on providing service, they've got the library, you know, it's, it's all, it's all neutral. I've, I mean, I, I've heard a number of things from, you know, someone is going to sue us because they don't believe the Pawmonkey Regional Library can not offer a service card to people. I can tell you that there are libraries in Virginia that do exactly that. That is well within your control to do that. I think, I mean, I think one of the, one of the issues that you're going to find yourselves in, if you feel the need to respond to that, is if we weren't able to provide the service to King and Queen for, you know, two hundred thousand dollars, now you're going to get the people that really do use the library the most and you're going to get the, you know, twenty-five bucks. So, now we'll be doing it for, you know, say, five thousand dollars a year. I don't, I mean, I don't really think that's fair to PRL to kind of subsidize that way, which is kind of the conversation we had previously with that. There's going to be, there's going to be some growing pains as people get used to things. King and Queen is doing a lot to start their service, get their service up and running. So, kind of gives them that chance to, to do that.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay. The next item on our agenda is a construction movement, physical issues at branches. And I'm going to turn to you, Tom.
It's kind of, it's kind of the same old, West Point is continuing to operate in the new location. We already gave you a little bit of Mount Pilgrim update, so we don't have any specific dates moving forward in terms of, you know, when the, like, the collection will move across the road, when I know, you'll know. But it's, we're planning it, we've got a good, good plan in place to make that happen. It is a tad warm here today, you may have noticed. We have our conditioning unit that is out. Talking about conversations, I am in contact with the property owner to figure out how we're going to resolve this, you know, moving forward. They're kind of, they're kind of like King and Queen, they're starting over hiring some different staff to, to work, to manage the facility and they, they're asking questions about, you know, the lease moving forward. So, it seems like a really good time to have some conversations about some of the physical issues with the building, so, yeah. Good care of that.
Is there any, I'm sure there is, is there any talk about doing some kind of a grand opening type thing at West Point?
I, I'm looking for a word that's less than grand, a good opening. I think, I think, I think town council's intent is to kind of have it be a, a smaller ceremony, a bit of ribbon cutting kind of thing. We're, we're waiting on a few things still to be delivered in terms of furniture and technology, and they'd like to have it a hundred percent before they schedule that.
John, John will keep us, John will keep us informed, of course.
Good, because I think we ought to do something.
It will not go unnoticed.
Good, good. Good, good. All right. The next item on the agenda is the general review process used by, for PRL staff and general library staffing questions. And this was a request. It's been on the agenda for a couple of times, so we, we've tried to make sure it will come up this time. And Tom, I will turn to you.
The, um, I'm looking for my copy. The, uh, evaluation schedule had been distributed as well as, um, the performance evaluation form previously. The evaluation form.
Yeah.
Has a, gets a rating from the supervisor. There are multiple sections that are, um, you know, included. Customer, customer service, results orientation, job knowledge, teamwork, problem solving, coaching, communication, leadership. Supervisors note the employees' work over the year, provide a rating. Depending on what else is happening with the employee, there's opportunities for focus forwards, goals, other changes, or things that might need to be addressed.
Do you, I noticed that on the budget for this year, that every, every line was, right now has merit increases. Is that, is that something that you do with your summary score then, based on the summary score as to where somebody falls?
So, yeah, the way, the way this has typically worked, there are, there are some variables depending, but, um, employees that are rated proficient, that's, that's a good rating. People who are proficient are considered to be doing their jobs well. They would get whatever the base merit is. We typically follow what Hanover has done. If there is, um, something for above, above proficient or exceptional, to give a staff member a higher merit. The last time, I believe last year, that wasn't an option because of the high rate that merit was. Am I saying it correctly, Jim? You know, so it was, it was pretty much base. We also pro-rate if, um, if staff start working for us, um, you know, April tenth, they're not eligible. If you start in the last quarter, you're not eligible. If you start in the third quarter, you're eligible for half. If you start before December thirty-first, you'd be eligible for full merit.
Can I ask a question, Tom?
Yes, please.
So in the case of, uh, what you just said, last year, there was a seven percent increase, merit increase with staff across the board. If somebody were, and that's an indication of proficient, based on what you just said.
That's right.
So, did anybody get a higher raise than that last year?
No, that's what we were just saying. There, there was no exceptional available.
And that was because why?
That's a budget.
What did you?
That piece was a budget, so, I mean, it's made it move.
So this year, I think you have it at four?
Mm-hmm.
So if somebody wanted to give somebody an extra, um, merit increase, is, how would you do that?
Well, staff don't, supervisors don't have an opportunity to provide an additional increase. That's, I mean, that's sort of not at their level. There is, the performance evaluation is a tool to discuss the employee's evaluation. Their, how well they're doing, right?
Correct.
That isn't always, and, and, and sort of always isn't tied to, to merit. We tie them after the fact, right? We, we do the evaluation and we evaluate staff and we deal with, with sort of the good and bad things that staff do throughout the year. It isn't tied to, to merit until the end. You used to be HR, help me out here.
Yeah, you know, our system is, you have to have a minimum of overall rating in order to qualify for the merit increase. So in some years, we have a little bit of a performance incentive, some years we don't. So, it's, I would say it's performance-based and to the extent that you have to have good performance.
So, so, so the supervisor may give somebody a higher rating, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's tied to anything on the financial side.
Except maybe a certificate. But don't spend it all in one place.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to understand the process and how you differentiate between the, uh, the work that the individuals are putting out based on what their expectations were and how much of is it above? And what is that worth to the organization as a whole? So where is the incentive?
It, it depends, yeah.
So I think some of the confusion is the usage of the word merit, right? Like.
Correct.
So if this was just a, a pay increase, that would be easier to understand, right? But because it's linked within the library's vernacular and within Hanover County's vernacular to merit, there's some confusion about, um, what that means practically as far as people's performance and.
So, I mean, and we, we parallel Hanover, but, you know, we have a conversation with, with that King William. And I believe King William uses a mixed approach. They do some that is cost of living. And from my understanding of things, if you're doing like a cost of living increase, that would apply to everybody, no matter what, no matter what the performance is.
Sure.
And, and merit is tied to, are you doing your job? How are you doing your job? And doing your job proficient in our current evaluation form means that you would qualify.
Any other, um, questions about, um, library staffing? I know that we had been looking at, um, some of the openings that are now available. And I think, Kristy, you had a question about the public service librarian?
Yeah, I did actually. So, um, I had asked, um, Tom for a copy of any of the youth and children, job descriptions, because on the website, we don't have any of the job descriptions that are specifically doing, dealing with youth and children. And so Tom had emailed me back and told me that those, public service specialist is for a location. Is this correct, Tom, for adult or youth?
It's, yeah, a service area is the way that that is listed.
Okay.
The way that we designed that.
Yeah, so I was, I was just a little, the reason that, that, that came up is because I had contact with somebody recently who applied for one of those positions. And I wanted to see, um, that job description. And they actually provided me a copy of the job description that was given to them just a few weeks ago as they were applying for that job. And it is a job description that is not on our website that specifically talks about youth public service specialists, so.
Is that a job description or is that a job ad?
It's a job description.
I'd love to see that.
Youth public services specialist, job description. So I'm just wondering if, why we're using these job descriptions for people that are applying, if they don't exist apparently. That's what I'd like to know.
Um, I'm, I'll have to go back and find out what, what happened with that. I, I cannot tell you that today.
Okay.
I'd like to investigate that.
Can, can we see what it is you, because?
It's for youth public service specialist.
Is that something you'd be able to share with us?
Yeah, sure, I'll show you afterwards. Yeah, I just have one copy.
I have somebody wrote it. I don't know.
Okay.
And I have a, I have a question about the IT, um, position that we've had on the books for a couple of years now. Is, have we done any advertising for that?
No.
No? Is that not a position that we feel like we need, or is that?
Oh, I think we're ready to, to do that, but with all of the things that the board has been doing, I didn't think that we necessarily had the approval to go ahead and do that. That's part of what I've been saying about those being big and that, the two positions in admin that you're asking these questions about. If you're ready for us to go ahead and do that, then yes, I'd like to go.
Well, it's, it's on the, it's on the list of the, um, the jobs on the budget. I know the IT is. I didn't see the, the website, the.
The, the other one is as well, which is, again, that one, the IT position is, you know, is much firmer. It's, we've got a position description. I can send that to you. And we're ready to, we're ready to do that. But there's been a lot going on for quite a while. And that's when I think we've needed to circle back and make sure that you're still agreeing with.
Good, Tom, let me ask the question a different way. Do you need that position now? And if you do, can you make a recommendation to the board that we fill it?
Yes.
That would be helpful.
Okay. Kind of a new process, that's fine.
And that position's been open for like two and a half years.
It has been.
Okay, so will you bring a recommendation then to the next meeting for us? Or do you want to do that recommendation now?
Well, I would think part of the recommendation is also, because you've mentioned, um, salary before as being a mitigating factor for being able to find someone. I think part of the suggestion might be that if you feel like that needs to be increased in order to get somebody what that looks like. Well.
We might do it, that would be, what would we start with? Don't know if we'll hire somebody at that show.
I mean, since I've been on the board, I don't recall any discussion about inhibiting a search for an IT person. And I don't know exactly, like, sorry, I don't know what the starting salary is listed at.
I think it's listed like eighty-eight, eighty-eight.
That's, but that's with five percent.
Yes, and I don't, I don't know what the market will bear, if that is, um, I have to familiarize myself with the job description and such. But just that, I mean, I didn't know there was a perceived roadblock on your part from us to that position. I just know that it's been sitting open and I didn't, I've seen it the same way.
There's a fair number of things that we're looking at differently with, with the new board. And, um, hiring somebody is a pretty big commitment. So just, you know, as we go through and are working out procedures and expectations, it's better to have your support on something like that than, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so if you will put together the recommendation for us.
That's fine.
We can cover that at the next meeting. And I would suggest, um, I would suggest to go ahead and put together a recommendation for the, um, the, um, HR website media person, that, the other position. Because we need some work done. I know we need some work done on our website.
I, I think I might like to have some discussion with you about that.
Okay.
That's not going to be, we're not finding that unicorn, guarantee it. And especially with the amount of money that we have to put towards it.
I didn't even know where it was.
So some prioritizations with the board's interest is, is, I think, needed for that moving forward.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I think we can move forward then. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the PRL staff, possible extra vacation days. And we, this conversation has come up because of July fifth. But we also, a while back, talked about the fact that we really wanted to take a look at the overall picture of our, our calendar every year, so we don't keep getting in this situation where we're, we're going, oh, my gosh, we need to do something about, you know, they, you know, counties are offering an extra day. What are we going to do? And it, it impacts us differently than it does those that. So, um, I don't know if, if you all want to try to look at more than the July fifth today. If not, we can, um, put that off till the next meeting. But I will tell you, we, we're not losing things that we need to do. So if we have the time today, this might be a good time for at least opening the discussion on that.
Well, I, I think we need to make a decision because, and then in the next meeting, it's the end of June.
We do want the fifth. Yeah, we do on the fifth, yeah. But what I'm saying is, do we want to look at an overarching type of policy that we, you know, that we make? Or do we want to only look at the fifth right now?
I would like to recommend we look at the entire year so that people can, staff and public can make plans and know when the library's going to be open, they know when they're going to have days off. I, I just think that is, just makes sense.
And make it part of the budgeting process.
And make it part of the budgeting process.
Right.
Straight up, yeah.
Can I make a suggestion now?
Absolutely.
Let's get to this straight today. I was pointing at my friend, Mr. Taylor over here. You know, well, come, come July first, we'll be, we're dealing with three jurisdictions rather than four. And the problem is, three jurisdictions don't always do Christmas and Thanksgiving the same way. Usually do Thanksgiving. They almost always skip them. What's called now Black Friday. So maybe we can work that into, but Christmas, the day of the week changes depends on how generous a multiple board to supervises are feeling. It is hard to come up with a single policy without input from the jurisdiction. We could, we can give him some homework, just let him give each other homework. What do you think, Jim?
Good, yes.
He's nodding. He's nodding.
So, so Hanover has a holiday schedule. We, we don't actually follow Hanovers because we use multiple holidays throughout the year as floating holidays. The library is open. The floating holidays are only earned by the benefit of the staff, full-time staff. So like, um, Columbus Day, you guys changed, I think, that that was one that you would have been closed on before. We would have been open. King William and Goochland, to the best of my knowledge, follow this state's holiday schedule. So, you know, we, and we, so we already have like a list of rules and really, like, you're trying, I feel like you, I guess it's, it's good, but you're looking at a, um, a consistent way to deal with exceptions that we don't know what they're going to be in the future. That makes it a little bit harder, I think. I mean, July, July fifth was one that the board could do. And I'm guessing maybe they looked ahead and said, Christmas, New Year's are going to be in the middle of the week. Probably not going to do anything then, but here's one we're going to, we're going to do that. You know, I don't, I don't know. I, I do feel like you just have to kind of take them one at a time. The, the big change for us, as you already know, is like Hanover's closing on Friday. Their, their business model generally is on the Monday through Friday schedule. And the library is a Monday through Saturday piece. So Saturday kind of becomes another question whether we're going to, whether we're going to open or close, how that impacts that.
And that's what we ran in up against this.
Oh, we've run it to multiple times where if we want to close on Thursday, they go all the way to Monday.
Can I make a suggestion that we look at what Hanover does, what Goochland does, over does, and talk about it next month?
Yeah, but that's.
About for the remainder of the year, we take care of the fifth, but then we come next meeting with, um, with those schedules, and then we can decide what makes the most sense for the library, the public, the staff.
I think what Tom is trying to say is that at the last minute, governments give extra time. Barbara, you've worked for the state.
Oh, yeah.
You have your, who's going to cover the office? And then it's like, oh, gee, I could have been off the rest of the week, but did not know.
It's, well, I, I, I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
Allow people to make a plan. And if we, if we go ahead and make a decision.
Which is in a perfect world.
Well, and we don't have to be reactionary. We can just plan what we want to do as a library board and not be reactionary to whatever Hanover does at the last minute.
So, I mean, if, if we can do that, I, I just think that, um, it makes sense for everybody. And just, just through the calendar year, and then when twenty-five rolls around. And just, just through the calendar year, and then when 25 rolls around, however we want to do it, I don't know if we want to do it in the fiscal year or calendar year, but I, I just think it'd be really nice if people could plan vacations ahead of time. And the public knows when the library's going to be closed for vacation.
Oh, I, I agree, we need to do it. Let's, let's handle the, the fifth, and like you say, get input and see what we can do.
I've got it down, to put it on the agenda for next month, but let's, we do need to handle the fifth today, you're right. So as Tom said, you know, our issue is if we give the fifth off, do we have people come back and reopen the library on Saturday, the next day, the sixth, which is Saturday? Or do we have people work on the fifth, although they're not working on the fourth, and open or give them Saturday off? And we ran into the issue of people who had already, are already on the schedule to work that day, who are part-time people.
So July schedule, this is early enough that that, that is not an issue this time. The, I mean, one, one of the issues always when you're looking at that sort of extra day with Saturday is, are you, you know, are you paying people or are you doing it as a closed day? And, because we will have people that will be okay to work on Saturday. If, you know, if you're taking the day away from them, making it a closed day, it's not as powerful as obviously paying for the day, so. Multiple, multiple options with all that, depending on your pleasure.
Anybody's input, comments? It's not just as easy as saying, oh, we'll give them the fifth off.
No, it's not.
There's a little bit more to it, you know.
Is, is it okay to sort of make that consideration, yea or nay, just on the fifth? Take that as an individual item?
I would say.
And was that by, just staying open on the sixth, is that what you mean?
Well, we could have a different discussion on the sixth.
Oh, okay, okay. I think one really kind of affects the other because theoretically, be closed for four days in a row in one scenario, another is the fourth and the fifth, or the, or just open on the sixth, like go from the third to the sixth. So I.
What kind of traffic do we usually get at that?
And you know, the other, the other issue too that came up earlier is how many part-time employees we have. And if they don't work, they don't get paid. So is, are we really, are we really giving anybody something if we deny them now? You know, Tom and I had this discussion years ago when I first came home, and thought, oh geez, this is, this is so complicated with, with this number of part-time employees.
Well, if we're looking at part-time employees, then we don't, we don't close, we don't do anything, everybody works the sixth, everything's open, and everybody gets paid. I mean, is that, that's, if that's the, the discussion, then if that, I mean, that's the lens we're looking through, so everybody can get paid, then I say, we just stay open and the public can come Friday, Saturday, and everybody takes off the fourth.
What kind of traffic do you get on that, on that holiday weekend normally? I, I don't know if, do we do a high level?
It's, it's going to be, it's going to be lower, but you're still going to get traffic.
Yeah, you still have people who plan to be there.
I think my, I mean, my recommendation would be that we.
There's scheduled programs, yeah. That's what I say, because, I mean, I would think that some people would really want the library open on that weekend.
Right.
It's a long weekend with little kids and. So I'm just saying, I, I mean, not everybody takes a lavish vacation. The library was great for, for us, so I, you know, I, I just, I don't want to deny anybody a long weekend, but there's a strong argument to just keep it open and keep the programs open and everybody, the part-time workers get paid and.
And we can just keep that in mind when we come to the winter holidays and maybe plan it a little bit better around the Christmas or Thanksgiving.
All right. Do I have a motion for what you would propose that we do, so we have a jumping off place?
Okay, Barbara.
I, I'm suggesting, I make the motion that we're just closed on the fourth, and then we reopen the fifth and sixth.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, do we have discussion?
I know, I know I raised a subject. I would think we, we need to give, if the county's closing, I, I, I think that sense and I said, you said, we should give a minimum of the fifth.
Well, you just made the argument to keep it open.
And I don't know, maybe contradicting what I see.
So I don't, I don't know that the public really pays attention when the, if the county's closed, if they expect the library. I, I, I think the public in general looks upon the library as a different entity, even though it's part of the government unit usually, well, it's different for every county, how they treat their hours, but I do think that with programs in place and there's an expectation and a desire for the public to avail themselves of library services on Friday and Saturday. I mean, can't help it both ways, either paying or not paying, and I'd say at this point, let's just keep it open.
Any other comments? Are we ready for a vote? All right, in that case, we're voting on keeping both the fifth and the sixth open since we already have scheduled programs for that time.
Let's see, I'm making a motion.
She did, I just did, she did.
Another second.
So we got a second, yeah.
Didn't hear a motion.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I don't think we need a, a person-by-person vote, so I think we're, I think the motion has passed, so. All right, and then I've got it on the calendar for the agenda for next month, and we will take a deeper dive into this and really take a look at it.
You have a lot of things on the agenda.
No. Make it, at least it's, I've got it there, yeah. Okay. All right, the next thing on the agenda is policy review, and we had decided that the only policy we would actually take a look at was the confidentiality of library circulation records that we had pretty much finished up. However, Ellen has started her deep dive into our policies, and I'm going to pass out a copy that she put together that has a change on the back, and your change is in the yellow, right?
So my change is actually kind of throughout the document.
Oh, okay.
And I will also note, the changes aren't substantive, they're really, for example, one of the, one of the biggest changes is the policy as it's revised, as it was revised earlier, opens with a reference to FOIA. And then, and then it has its policy where it states that the, and we'll need to make copies of this available to the, to the public.
We just got it, so.
So, so it opens with a reference to FOIA, and then it says, we'll maintain confidentiality to the extent permissible by law. There are a lot of other laws that bear on the question of confidentiality of data, of various types of data that the library holds, other than FOIA. So that's why I thought, well, we really don't need, what we can basically say is, you can open with a policy statement that you will maintain the, the library data and the, and confidentiality to the extent permissible by law. And then you can say, for example, FOIA actually allows, in your discretion, FOIA allows the release of library data, but we're not going to do it. So, so rather than opening with the full, and, and also, this is a perfect example of FOIA being a little confusing, that, the law as written, it's just not that clear, and I just don't, I just don't think it's, I just don't think it was a useful thing to have in the policy. You're not going to be doing what FOIA lets you do anyway. You're basically saying, we're not going to release this even the FOIA tells us we can in, in our discretion. So all the changes I made, I don't think I made anything substantive, it's all just, let's make this a little user-friendly, a little simpler. So a lot of the changes you'll see are making the language consistent. I mean, I had thought about going from the word user to patron, and then I thought, no, maybe you all, maybe you like the word user, and that's, that's fine. So I left users as user instead of patron. But I talked, I think I changed something, I referenced juveniles, so it's, it's, but this gives you a good example, because all of this is in track changes. The highlighted section is where I used track changes, but suddenly somehow I slipped into the track changes that was already in the document, so my changes didn't show up as unique track changes. Everything else in that document that you see is track changes by me. But the yellow section is where suddenly I was, I was into the existing track changes, and my changes did not show up. But again, there's nothing substantive, it's just a, it's just an attempt to streamline, make it a little smoother. And it's kind of an example, this kind of gives you a sense, oh, it'll be, the next, the next time I do it will be a little clearer, because I won't be dealing with one, with a version that's already track changes. But it gives you a sense of how I'll lay things out, so that you'll be able to see, this is exactly what I'm doing. And again, nine times out of 10, I think my changes to these policies, there may be a case where I say, well, I really need to update the state law reference here. And I, and I, and we did have to update the citation, when we were going to keep FOIA, when we were going to keep that reference FOIA, we did have to update the citation to it. But in most cases, I'm expecting to try to streamline and, you know, clarify, because odd as it sounds, there's actually a, a value, a legal value in having clear language. Everybody understands it, it's easy, it's easy to use, it's easy to adhere to. So there's a, there's actually oddly enough, a legal value in clear language, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, are there any questions for Ellen on this particular policy? Are we ready to call for a question? This was the one that we had reviewed that we.
But it's just been handed out, well, how about we vote next month?
We can do that, we can do that. It's, again, it's just a, you know.
I understand.
The cursory changes that she did, yes. Is everyone okay with tabling it till next month? Okay, that's what we will do. All right, we'll move on to new business. One thing that has come up recently is meeting times for the Board of Trustees' meetings. The suggestion was that we would do a couple meetings during the year, or at least a couple meetings during the year that are in the evening. It's open, you know, I think we're open for some discussion on this right now.
Weren't we looking for a recommendation from the Personnel Committee on this?
No, we, we haven't, this is the first time we've actually talked about it here. We, we got a couple emails about it, but we hadn't, we hadn't given it to Personnel.
And in comment, public comment, we've had.
Yeah, we've had a couple in public comment, too.
Okay, I know I've spoken to Ryan about it, and I thought it was go company Personnel.
No, that, we haven't given it to them yet. I mean, it doesn't mean we can't give it to them, but it hasn't.
No, I'm, I'm with discussing.
I mean, yeah, why would it go to Personnel?
There's no Personnel issue.
Meeting times?
Okay.
Are there any comments about this? Any thoughts about meeting in the evening? My only concern, and I will bring up mine, and then hopefully they'll open up for a little bit of discussion, is that if we did something like this, especially if it's in the middle of the winter, you know, and if we had something on this side of the county, it's an hour and a half drive to the other side of the county, if we have something on the other side of the county, it's an hour and a half drive for folks from here to get home, and it depends on what time we have that meeting, you know, as to what time, and it would be after dark in the, in the winter. In the summer, it's not quite as bad, but.
Could we schedule those meetings that would be in the evening at a more central location where it wouldn't be an hour and a half totally end-to-end, or, I'm just, that's a suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, that, that is something that we would need.
It'd still be dark in the winter, winter.
Yeah.
You know, I've, I've seen the emails too, and I don't think it's something that we want to ship to all the time. But I don't think it hurts us to do several meetings that get moved to the evening. With the number of requests we've had from citizens asking us to have a, a few meetings in the evening where they feel they're more eligible, having more, more convenient time for them to come and attend.
The other thing is, we have to think about staff, you know.
Well, we do have to think about staff. We do have to think about staff also.
Has there, has there been an overwhelming field of requests?
We've had a couple emails, I would not say more than two emails requesting this, and then we've had a couple people that have asked.
I've seen, I've seen more than a couple.
See, I've only seen a couple.
But I, I use a southern couple, so a southern couple, when a, when a southern assist couple is, is talking about at least three, right?
No, I'm talking about at least two.
You're talking about, you're talking about a real couple, which is two. When you, when you, when a southern assist couple, he's talking at minimum three.
I don't know if you're looking.
A couple of folks came over, it's not two. I'm sorry, I should, I need to stay serious.
I don't know how many meetings you're looking to move towards the evening, but if, if we did the first meeting of the quarter, so like, like a July meeting would be in the evening, October, January, and April, and then really, you have, only one of those is really in dark hours for the winter concern, and then you kind of have that as a travel and to see how, how that attendance goes and if, you know, I mean, you might find that you need to move more, and I don't really know what the response would be, but, but that would be one way to do it. I don't really want to do every other. And, and that would give, rather than it sort of being, I'm going to say random, that would give customers an opportunity, you know, kind of every quarter, you needed to come to the evening, to stay abreast even throughout the year. Just an idea.
That's an idea, yeah.
So I think for me personally, when I was appointed to this board, it was a known commodity to me. I knew that we would be meeting in the mornings once a month, the fourth Wednesday of the month, that's a known quantity to me, and as a mom with kids, my evenings are really full with sports and school events and all other kinds of things, so from my perspective, I would like to keep the meetings as they are.
Well, I would also comment that I think that we make our meetings as available as we can to people in terms of they are, they're recorded, they're put on the website, hopefully in a more timely fashion than the last, the last two, but people are always, we, they have full access to us, they can contact us if they've got an issue, we can bring it to the board. I personally am not in favor of, of evening meetings myself, so I will just say that I, I believe that we go, that we, you know, we as volunteers, volunteer appointees, go the distance in terms of making ourselves, we are available, our information's posted, and meetings are recorded, and I, I would not be in favor. And I too became an appointee based on the fact that it would be during business hours, which I, I take off work to be here, so, I mean, for somebody, for, you know, a member of the public to take off work, to be here, I can relate, because I do the same. So it's just, it's a matter of priorities, I guess.
Just being devil's advocate, just because of the people that have asked. One of them was a stay-at-home mom and needed for her husband to be home for daycare purposes for her, her to be able to attend, and she wanted to be able to attend and speak. Oh, she was also a Goochlin County resident. Another was, I believe Ryan had mentioned that for him, it would be more convenient to have some evening meetings, not all, but some, because of his business obligations. So, but anyway, just comment.
I, I got it.
And, and, you know, I, like I said, I was on the plan commission of 20 years. We always met at night. Whether it was, whether it was a, a regular commission meeting, or workshop, or whatever, I'm meeting us for always at night. Some should have been, and they were advertised, you know, they were advertised with some in hearings and that kind of thing, so they were almost never canceled.
Those, the meetings were in your locality, right? You didn't have to travel.
In our, in our locality.
You didn't have to travel, so there is, there is...
So I'm not opposed to a evening meeting. I think, I think we've had enough requests here. We've had a number of folks come in and speak in a citizen's time. And the emails I've received are, it's more than a few that have suggested that we try to do this. I don't, I don't see where it hurts us to give it a try.
My suggestion, if we did give it a try, would be to try it maybe twice in the year. I would not suggest four times during the year.
Yeah. And, and, and like you said, winter, winter can be tough. It's dark, it's cold, you never know if it's snow. Although, we haven't had much snow in the last few years. You never know. The conditions can be, can be treacherous. We don't want to have a meeting where we hold the meeting for folks to come and no one comes. That's self-defeating, so.
Do we have any kind of a...
And I will make one thing, with Ryan and John both missing, why don't, why don't we, and both of them will have, I know John has a busy schedule.
Ryan has a busy schedule.
Ryan's schedule is pretty busy. Why don't, why don't we get their input too and see just what the, the whole board thinks about it?
I support that. I also would be challenged having a meeting at night if I were driving myself. I haven't had to do that, but I can't drive alone. Coming harder and harder to do that. And I don't know how others on the, on the board feel about that, but I agree with Christie. I said this is something that they said would be during the day, and it provides me that opportunity.
All right. Why do, why don't we plan then to, we're just moving everything to the next meeting. We will, we will put this off, and hopefully we can, you know, do some resolution, not have quite as long a discussion about this next year.
We just decided that we'll send this out as an email. I'd, I'd like to know what committee meetings and whatever we're going to have through the end of June, because I already have vacation plans. Just saying.
We have one on the 19th, or not 19th.
It is the 19th, not June 10th, yeah.
Is it June 10th? Yeah, but there's one, there's another one. Yeah. Okay, okay. All right. So we will hold off on that till next, next meeting. Okay. And the next thing on our agenda is library legislative updates. Tom, can you...
The main thing, I guess, is that the $2.5 million increase for state aid remains intact through the completion of the state's budget.
Is that FY24 or FY25?
That is for '25.
For '25, okay.
'24 is...
Well, I wasn't sure.
No, it's, it never hurts. Are we looking back, turn forward?
Yeah, I don't know. Sometimes we do both.
Yeah. No, it's, it would be, it would be for FY25. I've not gotten an estimate of what that will mean for our state aid, but it's good news, so.
Okay. Any, that, that's the only one? Okay. All right. Are there any other items that need to go on our agenda today? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay. Second. All right.
Dowd, for lack of a second.